This conference will now be recorded.
I saw, I've walked most of them, not seen them all, so, yeah.
Yeah, they're not as bright as they were.
We're the first time here. Yes. So, when they go active, you can only see them. So that makes it, I can see who's on here, though.
Call the meeting to order. Pull the recorder, please call the roll.
Councilor Solzky?
Here.
Councilor Savage?
Here.
Youth representative?
Here.
Councilor Fleck?
Here.
Councilor Stenning?
Here.
Councilor Urban?
Here.
Councilor Roberts? Mayor Gowing?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
.............................................................................................
There's no items to be added to the agenda. Brings us to item four. Parents of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is the time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, will be allowed to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council's discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make a decision based on public comments at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a further council meeting. The first one I have is Johanna Zee.
Thank you. So recently, September twenty-eighth, Johnson versus Grants Pass was an opinion handed down to the Ninth Circuit Court, and it upheld the decision of the Blake versus Grants Pass. And though they upheld it, I think it's important, as we talked about, to listen to the dissenting voice, Judge Collins, who cautions the very foundation of which Martin was based on was really quite flawed. And I won't get into too many details because I don't have enough time, and you know, although I like to talk. So, he said it seriously misconstrued the Eighth Amendment. And here we are, we've got this law that was passed down, and we're all jumping to comply with it without really asking if this is appropriate for our community. He also goes on to say that, at this point, all the parks in Grants Pass, with the exception of one, are now being open to homeless camps, okay? So, if you look at the numbers on your HMIS system, that shows the number of homeless in the community for September, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-three. It's those people using services in this community. There are some other guidelines. August, it was two-eighteen, July, it was one-forty-seven, so up about a hundred. We definitely know, if you don't know, that we have greatly increased the number of unhoused people in our community. Just two weeks ago, a friend of mine, and I'm hoping next time she'll come here and speak, was accosted, whatever, at Coiner Park with her young daughter at the bathrooms. Because as you know, there's no doors in the bathrooms, and he was quite persistent and agitated, and she felt very, very unsafe. This is not the first time this has happened. Everyone should report any incident that happens where they feel threatened, you know, in any way where they don't feel safe. Safety should be paramount in this community. Not the compliance with the law, and not because we got some big grant money, but safety, right? So we put up the shingle that we've got this great forty-bed shelter happening. It may happen, happen this week, might not, but we know that they're bedding certain people. We know that we are still going to have our parks, people don't realize that the parks are still going to have people in them. They're still going to allow those who are third-degree sex offenders, those who have violent history. If the shelter is full, people will be out there. If there's minors, there will be people out there. So if people believe that this is going to fix the issue in our community without the community itself getting involved, then I think they're going to be highly mistaken and realized. So, this document that came out, again, right now, we've got some judges who upheld it, but if you read the dissenting voice, you will see that it is very, very flawed. In our outreach programs that we've been doing, our outreach has showed us, number one, that many of the people out there actually have places to go, and they have incomes, right? But they're not allowed at those places because of their addictions. Not because, you know, they don't have family here, or they don't, you know, because a lot of them do. And now we are seeing people from Portland in here, people, you know, that people are from Saginaw here. So a lot of outsiders that are not going to be allowed at the shelter. So, we're going to be back at square one. And I invite you to look back at the July eighteenth presentation that we made to council that recommended, you know, immediately, this is what we can do moving forward, rather than hashing this out, what can we do moving forward? And that could be making camping illegal in a certain number of parks, which leaves a vast amount open and still leaves you in compliance with the laws. So, Coiner Park, Bohemia Park, Trailhead Park, Harrison Park, right, where all the playgrounds are, it makes sense to prohibit the camping there because just because you have the shelter doesn't mean there's not going to be camping in there unless you make an ordinance that makes it very specific, that they cannot do that. So I encourage you not to think that this is just going to be a quick fix, moving some of the people out there within a short amount of time. How can people refuse shelter when it gets cold to people? It's going to happen, you're going to fill up pretty quickly, and again, we're going to be at the same place. So, again, I'd like to say, you know, that safety is paramount. We discussed these issues. We've got our next meeting coming up on Thursday, six o'clock, Living Faith Assembly. Please come and share your thoughts. We're going to talk about de-escalation techniques and talk about what this latest decision means for our community, how we can together, you can't exclude the people anymore from these issues. The government can't control everything. We need to be involved, right? So, I think it's just, you're creating a vacuum. We've got twenty-two tents out there, we started with seven when they were moved over from the two camps. It'll be curious to see what happens. I do hope that a number of those people are helped. So even if, you know, a few people are helped, that's wonderful, but what are we doing? Are we inviting more? So I just invite you to consider those thoughts and recognize that openness, we need to do something different. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Hannah Petrick?
Hello, my name is Hannah Petrick. My last name is spelled P-E-T-R-I-C-K. There is no A in my last name. For a long time. Okay. And my full address is seven-five-eight-seven-four Short Ridge Hill Road, Cottage Grove, Oregon, nine-seven-four-two-four, United States. And I left my bedroom for the first time in eight months on Tuesday, and have basically been reacquainting myself with Cottage Grove. I was born and raised here. I was born in nineteen ninety-two. I graduated high school in two thousand and ten. And I am back in the state for the last two years after having lived in New York City. Since two thousand and seventeen, I moved back to Cottage Grove, my hometown, because of COVID, because I was living in New York City. So I've come back, and I am reacquainting myself with Cottage Grove, Oregon, as it stands now, which is very different from when I left it. And I was reading the local newspaper. I don't know if this is the Cottage Grove paper, it's the Chronicle, I guess it's out of Presswell? Cottage Grove, it's in the area, it's the area, local area paper recommended, it's great, you can get it at the Book Mine. And I was reading some of the questions out loud to myself because I'm a very easily distractible person, and I find that words are better understood when they're said out loud. It's almost like we have an oral tradition as a species for a reason. So I was reading the questions, and when you read them out loud, you hear the answers spoken out loud, it's really quite extraordinary, especially a few of these questions. So I'm just going to read them out loud for the room and then invite you to think about them because it's really rather interesting. In regards, this is an interview with Jeff Growth? Not Groth, I was corrected, Jeff Growth, I think his name is Jeff. I don't have the beginning of the article, I only have the part that I was bringing today. Our new interim chief of police. I learned all about that whole situation very quickly. Hashtag the Book Mine is the place to get all of your news. And it's really just quite extraordinary, I'm just going to get to the point because I have half my time left. Question. What are your plans to review use of force allegations in the future? Answer. Whatever a police department should have is a system in place where you can be aware of officers using an inordinate amount of force or involved in a higher-than-normal average use of force cases. Currently, there aren't, currently, those aren't required here by policy, and they're going to be very quickly. We're going to do annual reviews of use of force, and we're going to be using force reports. So those are some changes that I will be implementing very quickly. Not in response to this incident, the September first incident, where four Cottage Grove police officers and one off-duty Eugene police officer beat a schizophrenic homeless man who was sword dancing and was no threat to anyone into the ground, and his face was bloodied. And then he was later arrested for resisting arrest on September first. This is the incident in question. Not in response to this incident, by the way, but in response to the fact that that's what you do in a police department. That's what needs to happen. Then we can use that data to ask, what kinds of force are we using? What are we using, sorry, excuse me, when are we using it? Who is using it? What are the circumstances? Where can we improve? Do we have training? Do we need to make improvements in our training? Sure, do we need to make improvements in our policy? Question mark. We need to have a system that allows us to do that, and that's what we're going to implement. I have twenty seconds left. There are two more questions and answers that I would like to read. May I have more time? Or am I done?
You're done.
Cool. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, brings us to item five, public hearings, there is none. Item six, consent agenda. Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item seven, resolution ordinance. A, ordinance amending the city of Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title One-Four. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with the even consent. Staff recently was made aware that three parcels of line located west of Hayes and Grant Avenue did not have the city zoning applied to them when they were annexed. Parcels are remnants of a former O P and E railroad right-of-way that used to run along the east bank of the Ghost Park River. Staff believes at the time they were vacated as a right-of-way, the city zoning was not applied, and the parcels were defaulted to the main county chapter ten designation of agricultural grazing and timber slash five, even though the parcels are within the incorporated city limits of Cottage Grove. The application to designate the parcels per the Cottage Grove Comprehensive Plan is brought by the city of Cottage Grove. The comp plan designation for the three parcels is L, which is low-gest residential. And this request will amend the citywide zoning map to show them as R Act One, single-family residential. Per subsection fourteen-point-four-seven-point-four-hundred-one, the planning commission shall review and decide upon land use, district map changes, that do not involve comprehensive plan map amendments through a type-three application procedure. The planning commission held a public hearing for C C two-dash-twenty-two on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, voting six in favor and no against applying the comprehensive plan designation of R One, single-family residential to the subject properties. As the planning commission does not have the ability to adopt an ordinance, council is being asked to ratify the planning commission's decision to approve C C two-dash-twenty-two by adopting a prepared ordinance. This ordinance has been available for more than one week prior to committee, and staff has recommended adoption.
Ordinance number?
Three-one-six-five.
Councilor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, move that the council adopt ordinance three-one-six-five?
Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Council Savage?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm just kind of curious, you said that the city was just made aware of these parcels. How did that occur? How did we become aware?
So, Council Savage, you might remember back when we purchased the piece of property that's adjacent to this from the season of boy, where the Fillmore Storm Drainage and also the accompanying property that we bought along the river to the future trail. It was brought to our attention at that time that there was property inside the city in the midst of that. We have at least two other areas that this has been done. We're not really too sure why they were brought in and extended the city, and it's not having that. The zoning applied from the Sees Comp Plan, but we're trying to fix those. So, this is the first of at least two more that have been canceled. It might have been, the only thing that I can think of is years ago, there used to be a boundary commission. This might have been an item that would have gone to the boundary commission to apply, so, and it just got overlooked, so. So that's how we learned about it, and we're just trying to correct these where we've lost some information.
Thank you so much. And to piggyback that question, if these are going to go into R One, I was curious how folks are going to access them. So I was doing some reading. It looks like one of them has direct frontage access to a street, but the other two do not. But it appears as if they'll get an easement access to that hole of sound?
So presently, those three parcels, these three parcels are already combined. There are separate parcels, but they're actually, they're owned by the same owner that's adjacent to them. So, the one that's on Hayes Street that actually does, they would be able to actually probably sell that piece of property. It is developable. In fact, their son-in-law had invited potentially wanting to build a small house on it so that they could take care of their parents as they were married. The other two parcels that are actually accessed offered the public side with grant. If those two property owners choose to want to try to build something on those small parcels in the back, they would have to grant themselves some sort of an easement, like a P and N, a lot of access or something that would allow them to develop. All the property owners were present at the public commission. I will on Zoom, a present in person, wondering if any of the three are interested in doing any additional development at this time, something at a later date that they might be able to end at some. And the only question that came up at the public commission is whether they increase their property tax values. We don't leave, so it's already kind of is their current piece of property in fact, so.
Thank you for clarifying, appreciate it.
Council Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, these parcels, will they affect the future of that bike path coming down? It's just farther down, I mean, we've talked about a bike path coming down that part of the river through the storm water treatment area. We did, yes, Mayor.
Council Roberts? No, well, actually, after acquiring a piece of property this past year, we built a cyclone fence, and also included slots. So, what happens on this piece of property is, it should affect the future trail at all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or concern? Sign them, the recorder, please call the roll.
Council Solzky?
Hi.
Council Savage?
Hi.
Youth representative?
Hi.
Council Fleck?
Hi.
Council Stenning?
Aye.
Council Urban?
Aye.
Council Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Gowing?
Aye. So ordinance three-one-six-five passes. Brings us to business from the city council. Item A is award of Tenth Street Storm Drainage Expansion Project. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works and Development are personally a request for bid on RFP, and on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Cottage Grove received four sealed bids missions to an invitation to bid for the Tenth Street Storm Drainage Expansion Project. The project consists of the construction of a new storm drainage line within Tenth Street between Tyler Avenue and East Quincy. The work involves sawcutting, excavation, trenching, removing, compact, removal, compaction, construction of roadbed, and asphalt paving, concrete for gutter, concrete flatworks, storm pipe, storm manholes, and striping. The engineer's estimate for the project was set at two-five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand and five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. Branch engineer prepared the intent-to-bid documents. The legal council reviewed documents to ensure that they followed the city's adopted public contract agreements. Sealed bids were due by two PM on September twenty-seventh at Branch and Newland's office at three-ten Fifth Street in Springfield, Oregon. The intent-to-bid is advertised on September second, two thousand and twenty-two, in the Daily Journal of Homeless, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, in the Registered Guard. The city received the following bids for this off-Tenth Street Storm Expansion Project on the twenty-seventh. First bid was from Wildish Construction Company for five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Second bid was from River Bend Construction A for five-hundred-and-forty-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Third was from JRT Construction LLC, five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two. And the final bid from Jesse Rodriguez Construction LLC for six-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. Branch Engineering reviewed the bid packages and found all of them to be complete in response to, and is recommending that the contract be awarded to Wildish Construction Company in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Harrison Village Apartments will be paying, I have an error here, they will be paying forty-one-thousand-six-hundred dollars for the additional storm loan capacity required to serve the new apartment development. City council recommendation is for city council to award the Tenth Street Storm Drainage Expansion Project to Wildish Construction Company in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract associated documents. Share that the Storm Drainage Reserve Fund will contribute five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand and sixty-two dollars, and the developer, Harrison Village Apartments, will contribute forty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars for the total project.
Council Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, move that the council award the South Tenth Street Storm Drainage Expansion Project to Wildish Construction Company in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract associated documents.
Second. Have a motion with a second, is there any discussion? Council Stenning?
Yeah, I was hoping, can you remind me, was that sewer work that was done on the, kind of the northern half of Tenth Street? It's been several years now? Eight years, maybe nine?
Hey, Council Stenning, there was a storm drainage project that went from, I believe, Quincy towards Main Street.
Right.
Also, a few years ago, before I was hired here, there was a water main break that took place just north of Quincy. So unless somebody else remembers, I don't know actually sewer work that's been done on Main Street.
Okay, I was just curious, the paving from the outset was pretty bad and remains that way. I remember living a couple of blocks from there. I didn't know if we could make a special request there. It's a very busy road and is only going to get busier, so.
Council Stenning, I think I know the location. That was where the water main break was. It's really rough there and a big bump, and it might be an item that we can get repaired when they're in doing this work because it's really close to the actual construction side of the project.
Okay, thanks.
Council Roberts?
Hey, how long will this project last? Do you have any time to read on it and how it's going to affect traffic? Already sort of rough in that area between Harrison School, Taylor, Doug?
Council Roberts, we're hoping that the project can get underway. I believe it is October seventeenth, provided contract. We are aware that there is some lead time in trying to acquire the piping, so it might extend a little bit longer out. And because of that, I'm not a hundred percent sure when the completion date is supposed to be. But it's our understanding that we'll be able to direct traffic around the project, so hopefully we won't have, you know, people not being able to use some street. And we'll work with the school district and the folks that need access on the road to make sure that they can get it.
Is there anything going to be sent out to the parcs ahead of time that the project will be happening?
Council Roberts, we tried to notify all the affected parties, just as we did recently, last week. There was a paving portion where the road was closed for two days. Staff went out and delivered flyers to all the impacted homes along the street. We also put a construction update on our construction corner, and we personally notified both the fire department and the school district so that they're aware of the need, that they have to travel that part of the road. So, we were part of trying to notify everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What else? Sign none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, brings us to item B, if I were mayor contest. Mr. Myers?
The Yogan Mayor's Association annually sponsors a contest, if I were mayor, for the youth in this state to provide a way to gain improved civic education throughout the state, which typically not exists, and to have them get involved in local government. We didn't participate in the student contest last year, but in twenty twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, we did participate, and two of our youth who submitted videos were submitted to the state, with Courtney Owens getting second place in the state in the video competition. The Youth Advisory Council? Um, the Youth Advisory Council, again tonight, and Em can comment more about this, um is asking for support in this contest again, and they are interested in helping to try to find more youth than we do have. At least one, maybe two youths that are interested in participating on the Youth Advisory Council. Um, and in the past, the council's offered a first and second prize in each of the three categories. Um, for the posters, fifty and twenty-five dollars. Um, for the essay contest, which is middle school, seventy-five and fifty, and a hundred dollars and fifty dollars for the first and second in media, which is high school students. The posters are for the the elementary education, elementary students. Uh, the contest deadline is April seventh. Um, we'd want it done before that so the council could evaluate that. And so we're looking at somewhere um in mid to late March that the judging could be done. So the entries would be due somewhere around the fourteenth of March and the council would make that judgment and announce the local winners on the twenty-seventh, and then we submit them to um the League of Oregon Cities or to the Mayor's Association for their inclusion in the statewide contest. So the question tonight is, is the council interested in participating in the If I Were Mayor contest again this year and supporting that the prizes? And I don't know if Emma has anything else.
Yes, Emma.
Uh, it's a really good opportunity and in a time coming out of this pandemic, I believe that it's really important to do as much as we can to give youth uh like objectives and like tasks that they can do together as a community to help them build that sense of community that we seem to be lacking. And I think that this is a really cool way to do it, especially if we implement it to um and into like the school system because I know there Mr. Myers was talking about before in past years, we've gotten it into like elementary school classrooms and they, the entire class does it. And we could even try and get that done at high school levels where it's done for grade or something like that. There's a lot of opportunities to be done here for um, and it would really like, I mean, if Cottage Grove wins like the state competition or gets second like Whitney does, that's just a cool way to get our name out there. Yeah, it's a really fun opportunity.
Counsel Roberts.
I approve of this. One of the main reasons for me is with all the changes we're going through since COVID in our community, it would be really nice to hear the kids' kind of view on the issues at hand that we have today. Because they're the ones that are going to inherit this town. So to have their their input on on the issues that we're dealing with today, I look forward to reading them. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Emma.
I'd also like to say that before joining uh Yak and Youth Advisory Council and being given these opportunities, um, I probably wouldn't have been able to tell you most anything about city government. So this is another way to um educate and let the uh youth have their own input on what's happening in the city or at least start to build those ideas.
I think it's important just to help guide those youth when they do want to participate in there because I I think probably Counsel Flack and I were the only ones that were getting the ones back years ago that were if if I was mayor, I'd have a circus on Main Street every weekend and stuff like that, you know, which was really nice, but it's it wasn't feasible, you know, so um, just educating on what the jobs are, I think, would be good. And with uh places like Ace Charter Schools starting up, you know, we have a lot more opportunities at different places to reach out, so. Do we need this as a motion then or?
Just a motion would be great.
Counsel Flack.
Mr. Mayor, move that the uh city council participate in the Oregon Mayors Association two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three If I Were Mayor Contest.
Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying a nine.
I I opposed.
Okay, item C is city manager's annual performance evaluation. Mr. Myers.
Twenty-five years ago in October, at the beginning of October, I started with the city in in um my employment agreement, we have an annual process for evaluations. Um, and so you have the form here to approve or consider modifying if you wish. Um, but the form needs to be approved before it can be used in an executive session, and we need to set it a date, set a date for that evaluation in an executive session.
Counsel Flack.
I would suggest we use the the same form. I it seems to have worked for for many years unless there's any key area of folks. Um, so with that, I'll I'll move that we uh use the same form in the uh city manager's evaluation.
Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying a nine.
I I opposed.
Okay, so set a date.
So you do you want to do this in an in an executive session before or after a council meeting, before or after the twenty-fourth, or give yourself a little bit more and use do it in November?
What works for everybody. Counsel Urban.
Mr. Mayor, um, open to whatever you guys want, but kind of tend towards after meeting um on the twenty-fourth would work fine for me.
So next meeting after, does that work for everybody?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lock it out.
Okay, brings us to item D, Concerns of Council. Counsel Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was handed by our city manager the council rules that we had a committee meeting on, and I'm wondering if uh we can schedule something with the committee to go back over this and just discuss it so we can get it to council. I figure we're in an election year, and I think we need to get this done, just in case there are changes uh in the council. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I know we're all busy, but I'd like to discuss this and move forward with it. Also, um, I really had a great time at the the League of Oregon Cities. Um, the the I took mostly classes on housing and homelessness and Bend is, you know, of course, way bigger city than we are, but uh uh Saint Vincent de Paul and also the Veterans Village uh was very, very, very impressive. And uh, so I just wanted to say that I had a really good time over there. And I wanted to thank Jake Moon for making sure I got there at home. My car was not gonna make it over that mountain. So there was that. And um, good news, you know, we used to be a lot, a lot of good stuff. We used to have more fun things going on lately. You know, I know, understand uh the world's changing, but uh I just want to thank everybody that made the mural unveiling and art walk a success. We have another mural done. And uh, that is great. I'm gonna be starting um fundraising for the Blue Goose mural on the American market. Um, probably not a week or so. We now have, we are now a five oh one C three. We are our own nonprofit for the murals now, which is really gonna make things. Uh, I got some pretty big meetings coming up. I'm really looking forward to that. I actually went down to Banner Bank and opened up the first accounts. It's not, I hope you know, if people know that Jim Gilroy has been promoting to district manager now of Banner Bank for Crestwell and uh Oak Ridge and Cottage Grove. So I opened an account as a gift instead of a toaster. They gave me a Jim Gilroy action figure, which I thought was pretty cool. So 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 Jim has been a big part of this community for many, many years. So I just want to say that. And also to our intern G, I've got three bags of dog food for you that have been donated uh through my radio show for the kennel. So um, once again, I wanna, I love going out and doing the fun stuff too, which is what Cottage Grove is doing. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, while reading the uh ordinance three one six five, and there was uh the housing needs analysis being referenced and the number of units in each of the segments uh that we were behind, uh, just stood out again that the single-family dwellings were by far the largest representation. Um, and it reminded me that I was hopeful to receive a kind of a gauge of where what we're filling in, um, what what is coming in uh in relation to that housing needs analysis. Um, I forget the number of units, but I believe that primarily been in the multifamily uh space. Uh, in large part, I would mention from the implementation of the M U P D. Uh, so I think there was a need over over the span of that that whole um needs analysis, was it twenty? Twenty years, twenty-five years of three hundred and forty-five. And I think, I mean, Harrison was eighty. The other one was somewhere near that. I mean, forty. So we're we're nearly, you know, we're certainly on track for that. So that kind of brings up the discussion about the M U P D and its functionality, has it served its purpose? When will it? And what are the methods that we can do to encourage these single-family homes um for building? So um some some analysis on that. It would be a motion, but I would love to hear about what what methods there are. I know we've heard a lot about uh specifically the affordable housing, uh but there's there's this other huge segment of housing needs that from my perspective has gotten largely unaddressed. Um, so that's my my desires to 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 see what we can do to as a council to to address the single-family housing uh deficit um or lack. Uh, then I would like another update on the bid process for uh Taylor Street sidewalks. We're about closing out another season of of available weather uh for that. And it looked like Ron was on that last project, so maybe he's got more free time now. Uh, and then lastly, on the twenty-second uh Saturday from eleven to three uh permit permitting, uh, we will have a skate park event, a fundraiser and just general awareness uh gaining. Uh, right now, we have over twenty-three hundred dollars in shoes donated from vans up in Eugene uh to just be handed out uh to the community, looking for other, maybe a bigger ticket item uh sponsors for prizes. Uh, this is intended to be a fundraiser as well as a letter of support writing campaign. Um, so show up. There should be some competition, whether it be a bunny hop competition, heists, uh I believe it's called bunny hopping pretty much all the disciplines, but not as familiar with some of the others as bikes and I guess it'd be an ollie and skateboards. Uh, so some some competitions and some people are donating some ramps and rails uh to be used during that time. So things are happening. Um, meeting regularly on that and hope to see everybody out there uh at Bohemia Park Permit Committing.
Counsel Savage.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I too had a wonderful time at the League of Oregon Cities this week in Bend, um soaking up and gleaning as much information as I could. Um, I went on the tours for a couple of the shelters, the Saint Vincent de Paul and the Veterans. Remind me the name of that.
It was the Desuch County Veterans Village.
The Veterans Village. It was quite remarkable, um, what they are doing and what we are doing and seeing the differences between them and how it is different. They have stick-built homes. Their their spaces are approximately ten by ten, stick-built. Uh, restrooms are in a community center. Food can be prepared in a community center, and their annual budget is seventy thousand dollars to keep running for ten spaces. And I was floored because here we have an opportunity for forty and it's a budget of two hundred thousand dollars a year. And so that seemed like we were doing far more for far less um in what was being offered. So I thought that was really remarkable. Uh, the folks that were living at the Veterans Village were incredibly grateful and happy. The gentleman that I spoke with had been living there for four months, and it was moving week. He's getting ready to move out because he has been helped enough that he can get into his own space, which is really exciting. And he was thrilled, very excited to be coming into his own space. Um, I just learned so much. It was absolutely incredible to network with other city councillors, mayors and city managers and how we're all facing um very similar problems. This is not a Cottage Grove issue. This is an Oregon issue. We're all going through this together. And how is everybody dealing with it? It all seems different, which is really interesting. Um, we're facing just so many different challenges and needing to adjust with the times that we're given. And that's different than what we've ever been faced with. We we just, we have to adjust. Um, I just also really want to encourage, and is Johanna Z here? I I want, thank you. Um, I love what you're saying about we have these ideas and we want to move forward with them. Please do. It's gonna take all of us. It it really truly is. We all need to be this community that comes together. And I'm so grateful that you stayed because one of the other things that I don't know comes up in council rules, and you and I were talking about this, Counsel Roberts, about moving the concerns from the citizens to more towards the end so that we can respond more in a timely fashion. So I don't know if that's in the rules.
Obviously.
It could be in the rules. I liked that idea because then it can be more of a, let's respond now. You don't have to sit through waiting for a response. Um, I'm I'm really thinking it's gonna take everyone to come together and help these folks out. Um, and on that note, I want to uh just have everybody send good thoughts and good vibes to the young man who was injured on Friday. There's lots of rumors being spread, but let's not jump to conclusion because no official announcement has been made. This is a really tragic accident. And uh, my thoughts and prayers go out to that family, personal friend. Thank you.
Counsel Roberts, I just really want to add, I I was really impressed with your League of Cities. Every time I saw you, you were at a table taking notes.
That's what I do.
Yeah, wow. I was very impressed with that for your first time out there. Um, and then one quick thing to add on to what you said about Cottage Grove Strong. Um, you know, I carry your preamble with me just about everywhere I go. Um, that's dated July eighteenth from the work session. Um, yeah, jumping the pool, that's what I'm gonna say. It's great to see you're having meetings and doing what you're doing, but uh the nicest reaction, jumping the pool and 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 help. I spent, real quick, I I spent about an hour with the lead head guy from um Cary Forward down at the uh I don't know who made all the curtains for those uh the shelters, but their community is working on the project down there already. I'm starting to see things get in there. The shower trailer is down there. It's starting to shake out. I also spent three hours in the park with the police uh on Sunday morning talking to um, there's a lot of tents down there, but a lot of those tents are for uh they're like storage. There's not people in all those tents down there. So it's, there's not as many people in the park as people are saying. And talking with Cary Forward, I I think we're making uh progress, and I think we're gonna be start moving people in. So I'm looking forward to. I think we're gonna have some ordinances and stuff we're gonna work on at the next meeting. Um, that will help cap what what we need to do here in the community. So thanks for the add-on, Mr. Mayor. Shout out.
Counsel Flack.
So um, uh, to Counselor Urban's comments about the M U P D, I fully agree that at some point, we're gonna have to address that. And reel it back in if if development started going crazy. We certainly don't want uh the market going upside down. So I I agree with that. I just don't think we're anywhere near the point of reeling it back. And especially with um inflation and history rates going up, I think we're gonna see housing development of all types really go down. Uh, construction lending and mortgages are very expensive at this point. So I think you're really gonna see uh and right now, we're still sub one percent vacancy rate. Um, you know, many of the folks that uh um, I work with in the housing, you know, field, I can't find a place to stay. Uh, so I I do agree with that completely at some point. I just think we're a year or two away from that for sure. Um, and and I truly would love to see the council rules addressed. Um, you know, they can always be changed again if a future council disagreed with, you know, one piece or another. Um, but there are key pieces, and I think it's a good education for everybody, including our our current counselors. Um, you know, texting during a meeting absolutely is uh not allowed. Um, and especially if we were texting somebody in the audience, anybody could actually request uh you know, to look at that phone and and say, what in the world are you texting? And that becomes a public, public document, by the way. So I just want to warn everybody that um there are meeting rules. There are laws on the books around that stuff, and we need to be very careful. Thank you.
Counsel Solzky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're looking at me for that, I have this one location, one of the Halloween Hoot and Nanny. So you have.
It should not be text during a meeting.
It's not text. It's the Halloween Hoot and Nanny for the Chamber of Commerce. Look at it. Look at it, you can look at my last time that I sent a text, which was before the meeting. So don't appreciate the accusation, Counsel Flick. I never use my phone when I'm in a meeting. So since I started with that, I wanted to remind everybody about the Halloween Hoot Nanny, so all the businesses participate. Even people just from the community, if you'd like to have a tent, they do have limited availability for the tents now. It is on Halloween, in case you were wondering if it was a Saturday. It is October thirty-first, and it is from three to six P.M. And I also do want.
Is that in the park?
Yes, it's at Bohemian Park, thank you. And I also wanted to express the sorrow over the young man. That was an awful, awful tragedy. And hearing, I've been following along with that as well, and for the woman that actually had him fall in front of her, that she has to live with that now. My heart and prayers go out for her as well. We're going to have to definitely, I, I am hopeful that we are going to be working on our ordinances to, we've been talking about working on for the longest time with our parks. And now that our shelter is going to be open, I would definitely like to see that happen.
I would like to just remind everyone that this year's homecoming parade is next Thursday at around one-thirty just down Main Street, if you, if anyone would like to come. And if you want to come to any sports or performances that the high school students have to offer, if you search Cottage Grove High School on your Google, the Google bar, our website will come up, and there will be extensive calendar of everything that's going on, and come support the alliance.
Thanks. And I did have a good time at the conference over there, and it was nice to see, especially Counsel Savage being the first time over there, she was really excited about meeting people and engaging and, and everything, and good workshops.
I believe she joined the Women's Caucus, lest you did.
And yeah, it was some good training. And you know, one thing about the difference in their shelters, they, they, you, I, I thought of as you guys were talking about it, is while we were over there, we had a fifty-degree temperature swing every day. It would be eighty-five at night and thirty-five in the daytime. We don't get that here. So what we need here is different than, than what they've got. So just food for thought. Brings us to item nine, report for the city manager.
I have a few items for you tonight. We do have, we've been visiting the Yak about the NLC conference. We do have at least one Yak member that is interested in going. She's checked with her parents in school and, and, and everything, and everyone has told her that, hey, this would be a great opportunity and we'll make it work, Cassidy. And so she's interested in going. So the question is for the council, you've talked about having a youth member go before. Is it still something that you want to support for the NLC conference? Because we'll have to get a chaperone as well to go along, and you're researching what that would take for, to meet NLC's requirements as well as our own child protection rules. So if that's something you're interested in, the registration for the youth representative and the chaperone are a hundred and ninety dollars compared to the seven-eighty for council members. So it is a substantial cost savings there, but we'd still have the same airfare and room charges that we have.
I think it's a good opportunity for them.
We will move forward with that. There's another Yak member who has asked and, and made some comments that he might like to go as well. But he's a first time this spring, this summer on the Yak, and so we may want to wait until a future year. But, and maybe we just take Cassidy and just see how that goes and do that. Do you want to, I do have a message that I do want to give you as a result of the resignations of our police chief and captain in July, kind of give you a timeline and, and a process of what happened and where we're at. In July, I received a number of complaints regarding personnel-related complaints regarding the leadership in the police department. I consulted the city attorney, staff, insurance staff, and attorneys with CIS, our city county insurance services, which is our insurance carrier regarding the personnel issues. And so on July twenty-ninth, Chief Shepherd and Conrad Gagnon were placed on a non-disciplinary leave pursuant to city policy. The non-disciplinary administrative leave doesn't display any kind of guilt or wrongdoing. It is an administrative leave so that we can do the, the investigation. An outside experienced workplace investigator was hired in the investigation into the allegations. With the help of CIS, I made preparations to continue the operations of the police department during the leave by having, hiring a new interim police chief, chief growth, and with visiting the Lane County Sheriff's Office and the sheriff. Well, Scott and Conrad checked in periodically for updates regarding the investigation. The last update regarding the investigation was on September thirtieth. Chief Shepherd and Conrad Gagnon then resigned from the department on October fifth. With the resignations, the investigation has ended. We do not, did not reach any conclusions, no findings or determinations were made regarding the allegations from the previously made and from the investigation. It would not be fiscally sound to continue to pay the costs associated with the investigation to complete an investigation into personnel actions for some people who no longer are city employees. So it is ended. And this is a personnel matter, and it is also not fair to those involved to disclose the details and score specific confidential and private personnel matters that have not been verified as true or untrue. As required under state law, we will, we will provide information requested by the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training regarding the resignation investigation. That's where it stands. We will be working with the interim chief to continue to make improvements and work on getting the department ready for recruitment of a chief. And that will be happening in a number of months. We want to get some things taken care of, make the department something that would be attractive for a chief. We can get a very professional and administratively competent chief in to take care of and move the department forward in the future. Like I've said before, this is one of, and these are, these kind of actions and activities are one of the most difficult things associated with being the chief executive officer of the city. You work with somebody for many years, decades, and issues arise, things happen, and there is nowhere, no place, no one to talk to. The information that I have is me, and it is with me and with the city attorney and the other attorneys with the insurance agency and the investigator, and that is where it will stay. We do not want to harm anybody's reputation. We do not want to raise suspicion or guilt or innocence or anything associated with witnesses or those involved in the personnel. That's what I have, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to move forward quickly and get things squared right there. The league conference was phenomenal. I had a great time at the league conference. It was so wonderful to see leaders from around the state again, face to face, that we've seen for years, and to be able to spend time with them. There were some, there's some great leaders in the state, in local government, and they were truly recognized, and it's really wonderful if, you know, if you don't go to the league conferences or NLC, the same thing. But league conferences just have that, that Oregon sense of here are people that are working for their communities. Very inspiring to be with them and rum shoulders with them. Most of you, in fact, I don't think any of you, except for the mayor and Counsel Flick, Counsel Roberts and Counsel Savage know now, but no George Indicott or Phil Hope or John McCardle or Pete Truax. Great leaders in the state, serving their communities for many, many years with great dedication. Great opportunity to meet with them. So wonderful thing, lots of, lots of wonderful training as well. Training that's conducted by other leaders in the state, other city leaders. And so they're sharing information and sharing that, that information back and forth. So it was a great opportunity. The shelter is opening tonight. They are taking in a few individuals to get started, and tomorrow they'll bring in some more. They have had their street outreach group working in the community last week and the week prior, a little bit, interviewing and meeting with our individuals that are experiencing homeless throughout the community. They've interviewed about forty-eight individuals in the community. Only four of them have said they would not go to the shelter. Three of them are from Oak Ridge, those are the only outsiders. They're from Oak Ridge as a result of the fires, and they've refuged down here. They don't want to go into the shelter because they're planning on going back to Oak Ridge. Another individual, a fifty-seven-year-old gentleman who lost his house recently and is waiting for the insurance and other issues to be settled so he can move back into his house. I think he lost it in the last couple of months, and so he's homeless as well, and he wants to stay somewhere else other than the shelter. By the way, he'd be a prime candidate probably for one of the overnight camping locations if somebody wanted to offer that to him. He's trying to get that settlement taken care of so he can get back into housing again. Most of the individuals that they've, they've visited with have, are, well, all of the other individuals they've visited with are Cottage Grove residents. Some have been here, one for fifty-seven years, graduate, another one graduated from high school here in the seventies and is homeless. We've had a number of people that have become homeless in the last couple of weeks as a result of the evictions, as a result of the moratorium on rents. Some of those people with children and jobs, and they are now homeless. So there has been an influx. So they are going to be putting that together and moving in, start moving in, in the next, today, tonight, they'll have a few, and then tomorrow they'll have more. We also have three churches that have participated, jumped forward to help. We also have another organization that is going to be collecting donations and moving forward and trying to get the washer and dryer units. One church did some picnic tables, did the curtains. The Presbyterian Church did, is doing the garden boxes and mulching stuff for the facility. We have another church that just called last week, and they are going to be doing a meal once a week and taking it out and bringing food to the facility. So there are opportunities for more service and, and, and functions out there. They're always looking for opportunities to help and participate in that. Also, I'm talking with Chris today, the shower trailer will continue to operate for the public on Wednesdays, probably the same time from eleven to three, eleven to three every Wednesday. They will be separating off the shelter site, so those that come to the shower trailer cannot enter the site, but can use the shower trailer at least. They are planning on training and working with the residents there and getting a number of them trained on how to clean and, and work in the shower trailer and help make that work for others in the community as well as themselves. One great piece of news that I want to share with you is the Oregon Golf Association annually selects a an honor for people throughout the state. This year, they selected Roger Vanderhayde, our golf course superintendent, as the Oregon Golf Course Superintendent of the Year. He will be getting his award on the seventeenth at the Twallerton Valley Golf Club. And nobody else can go but him and his wife, but we will be having some kind of celebration for him at the golf course sometime later this month and celebrating that. He is recognized around the state for the phenomenal work he's doing at our golf course, and they're very excited to award it to him, and we're really excited that he got it. So if you get a chance to see Roger, congratulate him. And watch for more information on when we're having his celebration because we want to do something big up for this. This is, was pretty exciting.
All right. Is there anything else? We have no attorney, so we're adjourned.